Call this Tuesday, November 11, 2025. Appointment and alignment committee meeting to order. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to make a public comment? All right, seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Support? Any comments, requested changes or otherwise?
Yeah, for sure. I just want to propose moving Agenda Item 14 to the top of the agenda. We have five candidates for three spots, and I'm not trying to influence anybody's choice of who we pick, but if we pick certain people, I think that will really help us as we go down the rest of the agenda.
Why?
Just because Larry Jackson, Nathan Slower, and Rebecca Patrick appear quite often as we go down the agenda, and at least it's not my intention to select the same person more than once. So if we do select one or more of those individuals, that will help us, as I think, as we go down the agenda, kind of crossing that person's name off is for a further appointment, right? That make sense?
Doug approached me.
Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay, cool.
I'm not sure it's necessary.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you understood what I was saying.
Yeah. Doug approached me ahead of time, and I said, hey, we can, you can make the offer and see what the rest of the board feels like. I could, I don't mind either way.
Yep.
I don't find it necessary, but that's...
Phil, do you care? We can always vote.
I don't think it makes a difference.
Don't think it makes a difference? All right, well, let's, if it's not going to really make a difference to the majority, it seems, we'll move number 14 to number one. Excuse me, I'm going to say 14 to number two. Is that okay there, Doug?
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Yep, number 14, we'll just hop over to that and then continue.
Number one under Agenda and Action Requests?
I'm going to put it number two. We'll do the Agricultural Preservation Board first, just because that's a little different. All right, with that, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Consent and Resolutions, Approval of the Minutes from September 23, 2025. Appointment and Committee, would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Agenda and Action Requests, and I guess I might as well get this out upfront, I apologize, I should have done this at the very top, but there will be a couple of appointments that I will be recusing myself of due to a conflict of interest. I'll just let you guys know that as we approach or when we land on one of those. So with that, Item Number One, Agricultural Preservation Board. Suggested motion is to approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners the approval to override the 12-year term limit provision stated in the Appointments to Boards and Commissions policy to allow Mike Brancaema to serve the remainder of his current term on the Agricultural Preservation Board through December 31, 2027.
So moved.
Court.
Can I amend that slightly? And I think, Phil, we talked about this maybe in 2021 with a canvassing board member?
Something like that.
And I think we kind of made a general policy, if it falls in the middle of your term, to extend it over. Did I have that right?
And it also, I think it also added to, if there was no other applicants, if this person wanted to go over 12 years, that we would point that person to, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was not a concrete thing that we lived on for 12 years, if there was variances.
Yeah, and I think it kind of bears out how we do judges here, like, you know, Judge Canoalson, he doesn't, he's allowed to finish his term even though he's 71, right? So I, I approve this, but also in general, just, you know, have that as a general rule of thumb. I mean, yeah, if it's on parks, and you're there, and it's going to have 13 people applying for the same position, maybe you're going to rethink that, but as a general rule, it makes sense to let people hit it.
Yeah, does that change the motion that's on the table, or are you just commenting saying, hey, this should just be?
No, you can leave it as it is, but, I mean, like, we talked about this at length in 2021, and, you know, I think the general thought was, you know, if it hits during your term, let you finish the term off.
Agreed, agreed. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Number 14 has been moved to number two. This is one that I will be recusing myself or abstaining from. I'll be happy to lead the charge on discussion, or excuse me, the vote, but I'll be refraining from commenting as well. And then one other note, as we go through these, there was a correction that was caught early on, and that is that these are not necessarily referrals to the Board Chairperson, but rather to the Board of Commissioners. So when I read the suggested motion for each one, please keep an eye out to make sure I say BO, supported Commissioners, and if I miss that, you let me know. There is one that does go directly to the chairperson. When we come up on that one, I'll make a comment on it. So the suggested motion regarding the Officers' Compensation Commission Member Vacancies is to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Ron France, Amanda Price, Larry Jackson, Nathan Slower, Rebecca Patrick, and to select three to fill three Officers' Compensation Commission Member Vacancies for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2029.
So moved.
Court. All right, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
So I didn't get a chance to interview maybe any of these folks specifically, but, and I have talked to Ron about this, just to let him know that, you know, my understanding of the Compensation Commission is that the legislature created it, you know, as kind of a citizen body to distance ourselves from determining our own pay, and we can have different ideas whether that's worthwhile or not, and counties have chosen to have this model, and counties have not chosen to have the model. But I think the idea that it, you know, is a citizen commission, you know, I think, leads me to say that I appreciate Ron and Amanda applying, but we do have three citizens, you know, who are non, you know, elected officials or former elected officials, and so I'll be voting for the three non-elected officials kind of based on that logic, right?
Thank you, Doug. Anybody else care to comment?
I feel just the opposite. I think having them the knowledge of being elected and what it means to be elected, and now that they're just citizens in the community, I think they have the knowledge to know that different, so I would prefer them on there.
I'm thankful for everyone that applied, and there's no stipulation in our, in our bylaws or anything that does disqualifies any one of these members, and so I would just say I'm thankful for each one of them, them applying.
Jordan, any thoughts?
Yeah, I will most likely be voting for Ron France, Amanda Price, and Ethan Slower.
Okay, I think we'll do Rachel. Yeah, going to keep a tab, I think we'll each name three individuals?
Yep.
And from a process standpoint, if the committee is amenable to this, any candidates receiving three votes will get a star by their name when this is forwarded to the Board of Commissioners, and that'll be our rule of thumb, pretty much. Okay, all right, Rachel, go for it, and I'm, well, I'll say...
Can we just clarify, who is currently a member of the board?
Currently a member of the Compensation Commission?
None of these members.
Larry is currently a member.
Oh, yes, Larry is.
Oh, Larry is an incumbent.
Right.
Thank you.
Because I don't know if we're labeling them per se, but maybe as we go through, if there are incumbents.
Do our best to point that out.
I mean, that may be determined up to your vote, it may not be determined up to your vote, but...
Regina, I might need assistance on that. I have it on, you wrote it down on all of these, I didn't transfer that to the, to the notes there, so. All right, Rachel, go for it.
Mr. Keiers.
I'm Ron France, Amanda Price, and Nathan Slower.
Mr. Zylstra.
Larry Jackson, Nathan Slower, and Rebecca Patrick.
Mrs. Medema.
Ron, Amanda, and Nathan.
Mr. Georgezma.
Ron, Amanda, Nathan.
I think you still need to call on me, and I need to say abstain, right?
Mr. Bruegger.
I'm abstaining.
So we have three for Ron France, three for Amanda Price, well, one for Jackson, one for Patrick, three for Amanda Price, four for Nathan Slower, so.
Okay.
That'd be our France, Price, and Slower.
All right, thank you very much. Moving to number two, maybe number three now, apologies, I'm going to say number two.
Yeah.
You guys can correct it as we go along on the notes here. Yep, number two, Agricultural Preservation Board, agricultural seat. Suggested motion, to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the name of Cliff Muesen, and to select one to fill one agricultural preservation board agricultural seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Their support?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded, any discussion? Can we just say all in favor on this one, or do you want to do a roll call?
That's all up to you, you probably can just do all in...
Well, we've only got one, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Put a star by Cliff's name. Item Number Three, Agricultural Preservation Board Real Estate Seat. Suggested motion is to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Mary Nader and Jaren Nyhoff, and to select one to fill one agricultural preservation board real estate seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, Rachel, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Keiers.
Mary Nader.
Mr. Zylstra.
Jaren Nyhoff.
Mrs. Medema.
Jaren Nyhoff.
Mr. Georgezma.
Jaren Nyhoff.
Mr. Bruegger.
Jaren Nyhoff.
That's four for Jaren Nyhoff.
All right, thank you. Number Four, Agricultural Preservation Board Township Government Seat. To place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the name of Cassandra, apologies, Cassandra Chapalker, and to select one to fill one agricultural preservation board township government seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Court. Moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number Five, Community Action Advisory Board Private Sector Seat. Suggested motion, to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Emmett Brown, Nathan Slower, Sharon Kozak, and Mary Nader, and to select one to fill one community action advisory board private sector seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Has been moved and supported, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't, if you don't mind if I say just a couple things?
Oh, not at all.
So I do plan on making my, we had some really good candidates, I thought, for this seat. My first one is Nathan Slower, who we did, I do realize that we already appointed for the Officers' Compensation Commission, if he's willing to serve too, and if this, if this board also agrees that he's the one they would want to go with. I just thought there were some really neat things that he had to offer to bring forward to that agency, his extensive nonprofit role, bringing in resources for funding, and I believed that is one area that continues to be just a concern that we've, we've looked at with the agency, and so I just thought that could be a pretty neat relationship that Nathan could bring with him in serving in that role, so that's, that is why I'm going to be voting for Nathan.
All right, thank you, Allison, anyone else?
I agree with Allison about Nathan's qualifications, but part of the reasons I wanted to put 14 to help ahead is that it took at least Nathan for me off the table because I didn't want to have too special with so many applicants, so I'm, I'll be voting for Sharon Kozak, so.
Okay. One thing to also keep in mind is that the Officers' Compensation Commission does not meet very often, it's a very short window in time.
Yeah.
And so I just would ask that my fellow commissioners keep that in mind as you consider putting him on a, on another committee.
I think I'll throw my two cents in, I, I think this will be an interesting vote. I do like Nathan, and I also agree that that's a short-term position as, as far as compensation goes with Allison, but my top pick was Emmett Brown, so we'll see how this goes.
I was Mary Nader. I thought Mary Nader, dude, she was just, I think she should be on the list.
There we go. All right, Rachel, if you would take the roll.
Mr. Keiers.
Mary Nader.
Mr. Zylstra.
Sharon Kozak.
Mrs. Medema.
Nathan Slower.
Mr. Georgezma.
Mary Nader.
Mr. Bruegger.
Emmett Brown.
So we have two for Nader, we don't have three.
So we wouldn't put a star by their name, do we want to do a second vote, and then consider maybe somebody's going to change?
For what reason?
Does anyone through the board, anyone want to change?
Does anyone want to change? I don't know.
No, I think...
I think we're good.
I think we're good? You're good? Okay, all right, okay, then moving on, number six.
Just a question, though, who is getting us, is there anyone getting a star, or is that going to come forward as no recommendation?
It come forward as no recommendation unless...
Oh, do you have to get a majority, or do you just have to get...
Yeah, gotta get three to get a, oh, really?
Just for a star, I mean, they're all referred to the Board of Commissioners, it's just...
Okay.
That was what Josh had asked if we were okay with at the very beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I mean, that, that just says to me that they're all outstanding people that are applying here.
Yep. We couldn't all land on the same one, I love that, Phil.
We could have a little discussion in, in the board if we still choose.
Yep, sounds good, guys, I appreciate it. All right, number six, Community Action Agency Advisory Board Public Sector Seat. Suggested motion, to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Megan Kirby and Danielle Weeks, and to select one to fill one Community Action Agency Advisory Board Public Sector Seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Court. Moved and supported, any conversation or discussion?
Yeah, just to note that Danielle Weeks, in addition to being my, my pick, is also the incumbent, huh?
Correct.
Also my, also going to be my pick, I thought it might be nice to have some stability there, I thought there were two very good applicants. I am really picking Danielle because they were two great interviews, and I'd like to leave some stability there.
Jordan or Phil?
No, I, I agree with Allison, she was, she was an outstanding interviewer, so I'm good.
Yep.
Yeah, Jordan?
Okay, I, I thought Megan did a fabulous job, but I also agree with the rest of the group on Danielle, so. Rachel, would you call the vote?
Mr. Keiers.
Danielle Weeks.
Mr. Zylstra.
Are Danielle Weeks.
Mrs. Medema.
Danielle Weeks.
Mr. Georgezma.
Danielle Weeks.
Mr. Bruegger.
Danielle Weeks.
Five votes for Danielle Weeks.
Okay, number seven, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, mouthful a number of times, private sector seat. Suggested motion, so I'm going to place it, would anyone care to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Ryan Harvey and Randy Quartering, and to select one to fill one Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee private sector seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there support?
Court.
I'm sorry. Support from Keiers, all right, any discussion?
So I currently serve with Randy on this committee. Randy has only had an opportunity to serve one year so far because it's a one-year term. We meet every other month, so we have not had a lot of meetings so far. There's also going, going to be potentially a new director coming on once they find somebody, and I'm going to be, my vote's going to be staying with Randy.
I thought Randy did an outstanding job in his interview also, so I would support Randy.
But any other comments? All right, Rachel.
Mr. Keiers.
Randy.
Mr. Zylstra.
Randy Quartering.
Mrs. Medema.
Randy Quartering.
Mr. Georgezma.
Randy Quartering.
Mr. Bruegger.
Randy as well.
Five for Randy.
All right, number eight, Department of Health and Human Services Board County Resident Seat. Suggested motion is to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Sharon Kozak, Barbara Van Horsen, Michelle Moore, Kelsey Whitcomb, and Nathan Slower, and to select one to fill one Department of Health and Human Services Board County Resident Seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028. Would you care to make that motion?
Moved.
Court. Seconded, discussion?
Just a quick question, Barbara Van Horsen is our incumbent here, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking next time we do this, let's put an aye next to their name, that'd be awesome. We're still around. All right, any, any other comments?
I think Barbara does a great job now, she did a good interview, so I would be supporting Barbara.
My top two were Sharon Kozak and Kelsey Whitcomb. I thought they both had some pretty neat background that I caught, thought could be a great asset to a pretty important role. Happy to talk about more specifics if anyone was looking at those two.
Anyone else before I chime in? Doug, nothing? I, it's kind of funny, I'm reviewing my notes here, I have, I use my star system. Barbara Van Horsen was one of mine, and Michelle Moore was actually another one, but I have down that she is an incumbent, is that not correct?
Michelle's not an incumbent.
Not an incumbent, so maybe I apply for something else? D H H S. Okay, well, we'll see where the vote goes. Go for it, Rachel.
Mr. Keiers.
Barbara Van Horsen.
Mr. Zylstra.
Barbara Van Horsen.
Mrs. Medema.
Sharon Kozak.
Mr. Georgezma.
Sharon Kozak.
Mr. Bruegger.
Michelle Moore.
We do now have three.
All right, all good candidates, I like that. Number nine, this is one that I'll be abstaining from. Suggested motion is to place into nomination and forward to the Board, excuse me, I gotta say this right, to place into nomination forward to the Board Chairperson the names of Elizabeth Butler, Tim Mede, Gil Segovia, Ryan Harvey, Rebecca Patrick, Nathan Slower, Dan Clompmaker, Michael Pukwarka, sorry, Michael, and Jack Vander Mullen, and to fill three Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority seat vacancies for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2031.
So moved.
Court. Moved and supported, right?
Good question for you, Commissioner Bruegger, did you have an opportunity to have that follow-up conversation with Jack Vander Mullen, whether or not he wanted to continue serving?
Yes, thank you for asking that. Jack Vander Mullen, as you guys will recall, was the individual that we may recall, we placed on the EDC Board in particular so that we had somebody there for the Hope College Bond Initiative, and Jack did indicate that he was willing to serve, he was enjoying himself and would love the opportunity to continue if we thought it, you know, amenable for him to do so.
And he's only had the opportunity so far to serve on for a couple months, we put him on there earlier this year, correct?
Correct, yep, you got it, we put him on in October, I believe it was, so that was last month, maybe September, to finish out a vacancy that was ending at the end of this calendar year. And at the time we interviewed all of those applicants, we asked them if they were willing to serve, continue serving beyond that, and he indicated then that he was, and then in a follow-up call, he indicated to me, as well as I think Regina, that he was interested in doing so. Good question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, Rachel, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Keiers.
Elizabeth Butler, Michael, and, how'd that go? And Jack Vander Mullen.
Mr. Zylstra.
Dan Clompmaker, Clompmaker, Jack Vander Mullen, and Rebecca Patrick.
Mrs. Medema.
Tim Mede, Jack Vander Mullen, Dan Clompmaker.
Mr. Georgezma.
Same, actually, Tim Mede, Dan Clompmaker, and Jack Vander Mullen.
Mr. Bruegger.
Abstain.
Okay, so...
Couple threes in there.
Yeah, we have two threes, so Clompmaker and Vander Mullen has four, three has Clompmaker, then we have one for Butler, two for Mede, one for Patrick, and one for Pukwarka.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Would this be an appropriate time to talk about our discussion?
Oh.
Just to insert that, so.
Sure.
I didn't want to affect this vote, but maybe it's a good pot spot.
Thank you, Patrick. Yes, Patrick had mentioned in a conversation, excuse me, as we were going through these appointments, that in the past, the county administrator was in one of the seats on the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We looked into it, and there is not a designated county administrator seat, it was just that the administrator had for...
Historically.
Historically forever.
Every administrator has served on that.
Yep, until, until recently, and so if in the future there's an opening for a seat, he shared with me and wanted me to share with everybody else that he'd be very interested in doing so or filling that seat.
And I will, per year, discuss, or our discussion, attend those anyways and on voting, just to keep up with what's happening, but just wanted this, this committee to be aware of that.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, number 10, Groundwater Board Agricultural Sector Seat. Suggested motion is to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Jerry Gertzma and Henry Worksma, and to select one to fill one groundwater board agricultural sector seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Court. Been moved and supported, discussion?
Yes, Jerry sits on there now, as a matter of fact, I recruited Jerry for this job, this position, I should say, and he is a significant farmer in Ottawa County, and does a lot with, I think he's got over 2,000 acres under center pivots and irrigation, so he knows a lot about being responsible for groundwater, and he sits on there now, so I would definitely support Jerry Gertman.
Anyone else?
Likewise.
I heard, mm-hmm.
Fantastic interview, and so was Henry, and Henry also applied for another seat, so.
And, and my comment would be, I have Henry with a star, but I also know he's qualified for one of the other positions, so he'll get my vote for that one, and Jerry, absolutely interviewed fantastic, so. Rachel, would you call the roll?
Mr. Keiers.
Jerry Gertman.
Mr. Zylstra.
Jerry Gertman.
Mrs. Medema.
Jerry Gertman.
Mr. Georgezma.
Jerry Gertman.
Mr. Bruegger.
Jerry Gertman.
Five for Jerry Gertman.
All right, Groundwater Board, I'll be abstaining on this one. Suggested motion is to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Steve Hexel, Rebecca Patrick, and David Wardell, and to select one to fill one, and to select one to fill one, and to select one, I think there's a repetitive, okay, all right, just a typo, let's get rid of that. The Groundwater Board Scientific Community Seat vacancy for one term beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2027. Woo!
So moved.
Court. All right, any discussion?
Yes, discussion from the Groundwater Board, Steve Hexel has been attending all the meetings, and, and they would like him there, he's one of the well drillers and has really great knowledge of, of the wells in the whole county, so I will be supporting Steve Hexel.
And I also chatted with people as well, and David Wardell was another one that came up, some, with some others that I've chatted with, and thought he had a really good interview, so I'll be voting for David.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I know Steve has worked fairly closely with our Water Resources Commissioner, Joe Bush, and so I think I'll be voting for him based on some of that work.
Anything else? Let's just vote. Okay, let's vote, Rachel.
Mr. Keiers.
Steve Hexel.
Mr. Zylstra.
Steve Hexel.
Mrs. Medema.
David Wardell.
Mr. Georgezma.
Steve Hexel.
And Mr. Bruger.
Abstain.
Three for Hexel.
Okay, Groundwater Board Utilities Engineer Seat. Suggested motion is to place in denomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Joel Davenport, Mark Pikarski, Henry Worksma, and to select one to fill one Groundwater Board Utilities Engineering Seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved. Port.
Been moved and seconded. And I believe Henry Worksma is the incumbent on this one. All right, any discussion?
I thought Henry did a really good job with his interview and explaining how he worked on the board and how he worked with the utilities and engineering seats. So I will be voting for Henry.
I echo that.
Anyone else? Actually, I will echo, well, I'll echo the echoing. Henry did a great job in the interview. He also has some farming experience, although I don't know if it's a large enough to have a center pivot, whatever that is. For the one former guy. It's Jerry Girt.
I will, I will take you for a ride.
All right, let's go for a ride. The city boy is getting out in the country. All right, Rachel, would you call the roll?
Mr. Keiers.
Henry Worksman.
Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, Henry Worksman.
Mrs. Midama.
Henry.
Mr. Jortsma.
Henry Worksma.
Mr. Bruger.
Henry.
Uh, five for Henry.
All right, moving on. Land Bank Authority. The suggested motion is to place in denomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Terry Dehan, Dan Clompmaker, Orlando Estrada, Derek Mullenberg, Rebecca Hop, and Nathan Slower, and to select one to fill one Land Bank Authority Citizen Seat vacancy for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2031.
So moved.
Port.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, I have talked to some people that have sit on this board, Land Bank Authority, and Rebecca Hop has been on there before and said she did an outstanding job, and I would be voting for Rebecca Hop.
I would echo that as well. I also served on the Land Bank Authority with Terry Dehan, and he didn't serve for tremendously long time, but he's been involved for a long time. And I think Rebecca or Terry are both phenomenal candidates. But I think Rebecca also expressed interest in serving on parks, and so I'd look at her for parks, so I'll be voting for Terry.
Anyone else?
I had both. My top two were also Rebecca and Terry. Rebecca, I thought, had the most current life-relevant experience, but Terry brought forth quite a bit of knowledge as well and felt like the only thing that separated them, in my opinion, was the longevity of time in something similar with Land Bank. So I, I am a toss-up between Rebecca and Terry. So I'm listening to my fellow commissioners on what you guys have to share yet. So if there's any other feedback.
Doug?
I'm voting for Derek, so I can't really help you out there, but.
Oh, man. And I've got stars next to Terry and Rebecca, so.
You can't vote for two, can you?
And I can't vote for two, so let me think about Jordan's logic with the parks, which Rebecca would be also good on that. But we only have two. Okay.
I had someone different for parks, so I can't help.
Yeah, yep. All right, go for it, Rachel. We'll see what happens.
Mr. Keiers.
Rebecca Hop.
Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, Derek Ullenberg.
Mrs. Midama.
Do it, Allison.
I know. I know I can. I'm going to go with Terry Dehan.
Mr. Jortsma.
Terry Dehan.
Mr. Bruger.
Rebecca Hop.
No recommendation.
That's a little bit what I.
Probably fair. Yeah, all right.
Yep.
They're all good candidates.
I think that's a good one to give.
Yeah, that's good.
Recommendation, so.
All right, number 14 was moved to number one, so we'll skip that one. And now our numbers line up. Number 15. Parks and Rec Commission Member Vacancies. Suggested motion to place in denomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of, okay, hold on to your seat. Kelly Beatty, John Garner, Rebecca Hop, Linda McCaffrey, Nathan Slower, Scott Blies, Ryan Habey, or Havy, Dennis Jolz, Malon, or Molly Fan, or Fan, Joyce Cawthorn, Nathan Hookstra, Jane Longstreet, and Joseph Siriski, Sorry, Polish. And to my Polish friends. To select two to fill two Parks and Rec Commission Member Vacancies for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Port.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, I sit in the parks now, and I, I sit on there with Linda McCaffrey and Jane Longstreet. Shane Longstreet now is Vice Chair, and Linda McCaffrey is Chair of Finance. These ladies work really hard in everything they do with the parks. They work with the foundation. They work with fundraisers. They do native pulling. These people are totally involved in the parks like I've never seen before. So I'll be voting for Linda McCaffrey and Jane Longstreet.
Anyone else? Allison, go for it.
I also had an opportunity to work with both incumbents, Jane and Linda, and have a lot of good to say about both individuals. How I guess I'm looking at my decision, my particular vote, is I based it on the experience that's had and also giving someone an opportunity to step in to an area that I feel like in the county is lacking. And so currently, I believe that there's certain parts of the county that are not represented on parks currently. We have a lot of people that serve that are based from the lake shore. And so my, my decision is, because we had so many great applicants, I am going to vote for Jane to try to keep some of that experience there that I think is very much needed on parks. And also to be voting for Joseph Siriski. He would bring a different representation on there that I felt like there were some really great. I'm trying to read back through some of my notes here, but when I scored him, scored people for my little scoring mechanisms, he stood out at the, at the top, so.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Anybody else?
I'd like to make one more comment about that. We, we do have a board that has been working together for our millage, and Linda and Jane have been putting a ton of time into that. And I think it's very important that we give stability on there as we move forward into our, our millage for the parks. So just another added part.
All right, Phil. Anybody else? Okay, I'll throw a comment out then. I, it's kind of funny. My star system, my three stars went to the incumbents, Linda and Jane. Two stars, and there are a number of people that got two stars, but just to piggyback on what Allison said, Joseph was one of them. And I even wrote in my comments, I hope he applies when we have an open seat. So I did like him.
Yeah, he currently is, he works very, very part-time seasonally for our parks. And so.
Yep.
He has been a very committed person as well. And so, yeah, it's, it's a tough decision to make, right?
You got it. All right, Rachel, call the roll.
Mr. Keiers.
Linda McCaffrey and Jane Longstreet.
Mr. Zylstra.
Linda McCaffrey and Jane Longstreet.
Mrs. Midama.
Jane Longstreet and Joseph Siriski.
Mr. Jortsma.
Linda McCaffrey and Rebecca Hop.
Mr. Bruger.
Jane Longstreet and Linda McCaffrey.
Four for Jane Longstreet and four for Linda McCaffrey.
Okay. Number 16. Veterans Services Committee War Veterans Vacancy Seat. Suggested motion is to place in denomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of David Chesney, Dan Clompmaker, Donald Dykstra, Mark Northrup, Larry Jackson, and Steve Skodak, and to select two to fill two Veterans Services Committee War Veteran Vacancies for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2029.
So moved.
Port.
Moved and supported. Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, so I had Donald Dykstra and Mark Northrup kind of with the supposition that Larry may have been chosen for earlier board. I'll be picking Larry, you know, because he's a younger vet. I think we need that representation, and no disrespect to Mark Northrup or, you know, his age or anything like that. But I'll be voting for Don and for Larry.
That's good. Anybody else? Allison, yeah.
I'll also be voting for Don Dykstra. He came highly recommended by our veterans team due to the many events that he continues to show up as, just showing up and loving on veterans and being very involved. So he was my first choice. High up on there as well for me was Steve Skodak. Something that really stood out to me was when he shared about the forgotten stewardship that he helps his, one of his fellow veteran friends with. And I felt like some of the things that he had to offer could be very useful serving on, on the board. So I'll be voting for Don Dykstra and Steve Skodak.
All right, we got two. Anybody else?
One thing, I, I thought Don did a great job too. One thing I noticed about Mark Northrup, even though a little controversial, I thought he did a great job of helping veterans get some, some needed money. And I, I think that would be a needed plus in our Veteran Service Committee. So I'll vote for Don and Mark.
Anyone else?
What? I'm just going to point out a concern. I do have a concern. I think I mentioned it to you guys on committee. I'm not sure who was all there, but I think some of my concerns that I shared with one of those applicants that you just mentioned, I'm a little concerned with potentially how we're. I'm trying to be very conscientious of what I'm sharing. I'm just going to put it for that right now. I, I have some concerns with that particular applicant, applicant coming to serve on the current board.
Anyone else before I chime in? All right, I like Donald Dykstra and Steve Skodak for a lot of the, the comments that have already been made here. Absolutely love Mark, awesome guy. Spitfire. Mark, wherever you are, I love you. And then all the rest of the veterans who applied, thank you very, very much. So Rachel, would you call the roll?
Mr. Keiers.
Where are we? Donald Dykstra and Mark Northrup.
Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, Don Dykstra and Larry Jackson.
Mrs. Midama.
Don Dykstra and Steve Skodak.
Mr. Jortsma.
Mark Northrup and Steve Skodak.
Mr. Bruger.
Steve Skodak and Donald Dykstra.
Four for Dykstra and three for Skodak.
Okay. All right, number 17. West Michigan Regional Planning Commission Ottawa County Private Sector Seat. Another mouthful. Suggested motion is to place in a nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the names of Randy Quartering, Sharon Kozak, and Mary Nader, and to select one to fill one West Michigan Regional Planning Commission Ottawa County private sector seat for one term beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Port.
Moved and supported. Discussion. I have a question. Did we, these people, a couple of these people have been on numerous ones. Have, did we appoint them anywhere else? Like, they've all.
Mary Nader got two votes on, on Committee Action, but not the third, so.
Okay.
None of these have had three votes yet, as far as you remember.
No.